Okay.
What? You ready? Everybody ready? Okay. Thank you for attending this evening's, uh, meeting. Our first meeting in September. Fall is not far behind us. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Dr. Cezar, if you don't mind, would we all rise for the invocation?
Thank you. I'm sorry, Felix. I was gonna do that next. Thank you.
David, you'll do the pledge.
Let us all pray. Gracious Father, give us all good graces. We come to you, oh Lord, thank you for your many, many blessings. We thank you for the city of Biloxi. We thank you for all the officials. We thank you for all who came out. We ask all in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Salute.
Second, thank you, Mr. Guines. Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. So we have a motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Guines and a second by Mr. Glavine. Is there any discussion? All approve? All in favor? Excuse me. It's approved on a six oh vote. If the clerk will read the changes, please.
To the consent agenda, we're substituting five E at exhibit C only for resolution excepting rate quote from Trustmark National Bank. We're substituting five F resolution only, resolution authorizing change order number thirty-three with Nikkei Brothers Construction Company. And to the routine agenda, we're adding purchase of printing and direct mail and a docket in the amount of thirty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventeen cents.
Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Some of.
By Mr. Guines? Is there a second by Mr. Glavine? Any discussion? All in favor? It's a six oh vote for the clerk. Thank you. All right, that brings us to the mayor's report.
I do have a brief report, and really, this is as much for the councilman as for the people that may be watching today or in the future. In the wake of the success that we've seen with the Mercy Cross homeless campus, I'll use the term campus, uh, you know, over the last month, and the impact of them cooperating nicely with Loews and Fishes doing the feeding and the Back Bay Mission feeding and Mercy Cross property, uh, campus, uh, housing the homeless. We've seen, in the wake of that, we've started on another project with the, uh, with the property collectively known as the Broadwater Property. So working with those owners, we started just a week ago, a major push into the camps, moving from the west to the, from the east to the west. We're literally on either side of Iris Street and the north of the railroad track. The property owners, with the help of the Biloxi Police, have gotten in there and they're cleaning out the camps. They notified the people they had to be moved. They had to be moved by a certain date. And they've been, they've, they've, they report to me that they've got two more weeks to go to finish that section of the Broadwater Property. That's probably not even twenty-five percent of the property, but it's heavily, um, awful lot of bad homeless people in there. So that's underway. And the different agencies are working with us, uh, to try and find homes for the people that are willing to play ball. And, uh, the police is gonna be working on some of the bad actors. And, um, when that is finished, we, we, just this week, got an agreement with the school district that we would have permission to go into Cavalier Park where the old, um, school used to be, Bouvoir Elementary, I believe it was. And that, so we'll start, as of tomorrow morning, we'll be, we'll have a Public Works crew in there working on, on, uh, cleaning up that area, tearing down any of the old structures. And, um, the contractor has been hired that's gonna start the week after bush hogging all the grounds. So all of this is going underway very quietly over the last couple of weeks. We'll report to the council when we get some more news.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Ms. Leonard? All right, thank you. Brings us to departmental reports. I'm gonna start.
Travel report.
Oh, excuse me. There's something we need to spread on the minutes? The travel expense card?
I didn't see that in my notes, but, uh...
No, but we were given a handout, so, uh, we'll just note that they were spread on the minutes, Carrie. All right? Thank you. All right, council reports. I'll start on my right. Give Mr. Shoemaker a break. Go ahead, Mr. Shoemaker.
A couple of things. Mr. Leonard, I know the mayor mentioned, uh, last couple of months and recently again, regarding some laborers, contract laborers for mowing and weed eating. Any idea?
I don't think, uh, any, I know they've gotten pricing, but they haven't done anything with it yet.
But that is still in the works?
Yeah, and I think it's long-term. We're gonna end up doing more that way.
But that still is in the, I mean, what we're looking at doing in the short term as of now?
I think so.
Okay, good, thank you. Question. For an event to be a city-sponsored event, what has to happen for that to be a city-sponsored event?
Well...
I'll get, let me try that.
Yeah.
It's hard to do that in, uh, you know, ten words or less. Typically, a, the fees that go with a special event can be waived or modified if they are leasing a city-owned facility. Uh, so, uh, there's no technically, there's no official quote "city-sponsored" event unless it's just something that the city was totally doing, like an inauguration or something like that.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you. And last, last, uh, comment. I know it rained, we had some rain in the last week. Multiple, multiple calls about ditches and drainage, which is nothing unusual. I know Public Works has been working. I know they've been out and cleaned some ditches. And they've actually been out cutting some grass. I know the rain held them up a little bit, but I do wanna give them a shout-out 'cause they've gotten some grass and some ditches cleaned and some grass mowed and board seven, so I appreciate that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Mr. Glavine?
I only have a couple of things on the issue of grass cutting and ditch cleaning. Appreciate, uh, Public Works. They did a very thorough job on the concrete culverts on Tribe Drive. Uh, that area was growing up with grass and the culverts with the sediment was clogging up that drainage system. Now it's very clean and with the rain that we recently had, you can see the flow of the storm water, uh, in that system like it's supposed to. And then a shout-out to our Biloxi High School and our new coach, DeBeauz, for getting his first win over Stone County. The kids had a very spirited pep rally, probably one of the best in recent years. And then they followed it up there, uh, you know, on the, on the football field with a big first win. So get out and support them Indians and all your local teams, and let's have a good football season. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Mr. McGilvery?
I just have one comment. I wanna thank the administration for being involved with the Catholic Diocese and the homeless situation down at Mercy Cross that we talked about earlier. I think, um, as a citizen of Biloxi, uh, the homeless has been an issue for a long, long time. And finally, starting with the Catholic Diocese, uh, they've picked that can up off the ground and, and, and going in the direction to do something that we all want done. They're working in, like you had mentioned, uh, Mr. Mike, that they are working with some other agencies down there too, to accomplish getting something done for the homeless. It was my understanding that, um, in September of this month, that, um, was one of the missions that were bringing some trailers in and trying to get, uh, the folks down there out of the tents into some type of temporary trailers. And I thought that was a great idea. I don't know where they're at on that, but maybe we can find that out in the next day or two when we're talking to them. But, uh, I don't know the impact that they're, that they've had, but I know a lot of the homeless have gone down there, and the majority of them, from what I'm understanding, the information I'm getting, are taking up the advantages of the situations that are offered to them there. And, uh, so it's great to see that the administration's moving forward and working with them. I think that's just a win-win situation all the way around for our homeless situation. And I wanna thank you.
Mercy Cross started with a, a group of over a hundred homeless people that we identified in its census when they started. They're down to forty now. The difference is, some of those bad actors who were not willing to play by the rules, to stay on campus, they were forced to leave. Some were actually arrested. Some, um, some, actually, they found homes for or found family members that would take them back. So, so they're actually, and, and the nice thing is, the homeless coalition is working and that the Loews and Fishes group is doing the cooking. And the Mercy Cross group has got the big open gymnasium, all air-conditioned and place for showers and place for them to sit quietly and eat a meal. And, uh, it's, it's really something to see. We just, we need more of that.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Anything else, Mr. McGilvery? Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Ms. Newman?
Yes. Speaking of the homeless, there's been lots of rumors, right, running around about the Broadwater Property and then the owner doesn't wanna clean up the rest of the land. So what can we do about that if that is the case? 'Cause apparently it's gotten worse. Um, is there an ordinance that maybe we need to look at, maybe changing so we can do something? Could we clean up his property like we do on code enforcement and then charge it to their taxes later on? Um, can we also clean up that Bouvoir School back there? Apparently, the homeless are also conjugating over there and supposedly some sex offenders, and there's kids out there. You know, that was the whole reason I didn't wanna do the homeless shelter there because of the families in that area. And is it possible, um, maybe even setting a walking curfew past, say, ten PM in that neighborhood to stop these aggressive homeless people walking around in these neighborhoods for safety as well? Maybe have police presence in the area? So do you have any update at all that you can give us?
Well, I started by saying that the property owners, I think they've kind of come to the conclusion that their property's value is going down by the fact that they've let it go. And, uh, that if they're gonna sell it to a developer someday, that it would be helpful to be cleaned up and not overrun with homeless people. So they've been very cooperative over the last couple of weeks. And I know they're working, they've got a contractor working pretty hard. I know they haven't gotten everywhere they need to. Got a long way to go.
I'll just jump in. I know that all, all that's in progress, and they have. We've received really nothing but cooperation. Nobody from the Broadwater has said, "We're gonna stop and we're not gonna do this."
Okay.
We can't control what people wanna put out on social media, but that's not happening. And the area at the ball field, that's what Mike was mentioning as far as the school's giving us permission in the next two weeks.
Okay.
To gut that out and clear that out. We've got old dugouts that are basically like serving as little hotels.
Correct.
They're falling apart, so those need to be taken out.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh...
Okay, so the school still owns it?
School owns it, yes.
All right. So is there...
It'll be cleared out. It's gonna be cleared out within a month, I'd say.
Perfect, I love to hear that. Um, it's just that it seems like the homeless people are maybe angry about it and they're being more aggressive than usual. So again, can we look at maybe setting some type of curfew or just police presence after a certain time to keep these people off of their streets and threatening them and coming up in their yards and...
Yeah, one thing that's under discussion is a, uh, a trailer that is available. Mayor and the chief are still working out logistics, but possibly having a, like, a temporary substation there
Okay.
where police could, could pull in.
Perfect, all right.
We're locating where the power is for that, so...
Okay.
These things, they are all going on, you know, kind of what you said. People have said it, and we're going through that.
Yeah, until then, if we could have the police presence in the morning while the kids are sitting there for their bus stop, 'cause apparently, you know...
Right.
Those people are coming out early in the morning, these sex offenders and that. Um, and also at night, you know, these people walking around. If we can just have some police presence of somewhat until we can get that substation, that'd be great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Mr. Guines?
All right, great. Uh, thank you for that report. You know, I was gonna ask the same thing, so now I'm glad to see things are being taken care of. The Catholic Diocese, like I said, they're doing what, what they should be doing as far as taking care of a lot of the homeless. Um, I wanna shift gears a little bit and thank the police department in the neighborhood ward too. They've been riding really good. People have been telling me that they're feeling a whole lot safer. Um, they're, they're stopping cars properly. They're doing all the right things, so I really appreciate that. Hammerbeck Park and Bush Park, they've been riding through there. Haven't had the people congregating past, um, the hours that the parks supposed to be closed. And, and that's a big thing, because they'll sit there and they'll, they'll just sit there all night long. So the police department has been doing a fantastic job in that area, making people feel safe. So I appreciate you on that, chief. Um, and last thing is, uh, grass cutting, just like everybody else. What I'll do is I'll get Public Works, some of the smaller streets that get forget, forgotten. They're doing a good job on the big streets, but there are some small streets that I rode through the last couple of days. And, uh, I'll just get a list of that so they can kinda get on through there. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Guines. I have three things, just a reminder to the administration. Excuse me. That, uh, I'm looking for a vacancy report on city positions for the next council meeting. I'd email the form to you, just so it could be filled in, make it a little easier for you. Also, just a note on the city's letterhead. They've added Mr. Shoemaker, but we've not yet added, I don't think, Mr. McGilvery, the forgotten man. We, we gotta do something about that.
We'll take care of that tomorrow morning.
All right. The third thing is, uh, just advance warning. I have a Ward Five meeting scheduled for Tuesday, September twenty-fourth. That's the last Tuesday in September. It's six o'clock at the Snyder Center, and I'll remind everybody again at another council meeting. All right, that brings us to the public agenda. We'll set aside up to forty-five minutes to listen to citizens' comments. A reminder that each speaker's permitted up to three minutes. When, when you're recognized, if you'd come to the table, you need to pull the mic sorta close to ya. Uh, sign in and state your name for the clerk so she can get you on the record. That, uh, having been said, is there anybody on my left, your right, that wishes to comment? Mr. Celestrum?
Mr. Celestrum? You're on a mission from God, right?
Yes, I am. How you doing, everybody? First of all, thank you for getting the message. I want everyone to know that I only moved here in January and fell in love with the town and realized there is a problem. I am not anti-homeless. We have people in our neighborhood that let homeless people live with them and bring them to work every day to work with them and bring them home. There was about, I don't know, fifteen people in our neighborhood, and they were, how can you say? Part of our neighborhood, and they were homeless. And we, they cut the lawn, they did, we, we all knew where each other... But over the last couple of months, we've been overwhelmed. I, I don't want anyone to think that I'm not, you know, I'm anti-homeless. There's a lot of smoke being blown up my whatever here by a lot of people, not necessarily you guys. But I don't think it's fair that I should go and do all this work and run back and forth. And then I walk into the mayor's office and it's like, "Oh yeah, this is what we're doing. This is what we're doing." But nothing is ever true, and you have to come to a meeting. I'm not getting paid. Why can't the citizens be told, "This is the date this is gonna be"? Like, for example, that property, it's all gonna be cleaned up. And I'm sure, I could sit here and go, "Why didn't you clean it up before"? But the question is, how's it gonna be maintained? Are you gonna put a sign up on the property? If you see someone, call this police number. The policemen are very busy, and I get it. This is a great movement forward, and I think it's gonna help people. That's what I really think's gonna happen. But we have to realize that we got here somehow. And the people that walk my street, I'm gonna tell you, I've run into numerous people who got a Greyhound bus ticket from out west and money to get here. Why they think this is a soft target? I'm not making this stuff up. And I appreciate everything. I don't know who's gonna speak, but when I moved to the neighborhood, people were afraid and quiet. You have some neighbors who might wanna speak, but I want you all to know that that's a big deal for them. So thank you, everybody. I'm Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
All right, Bob.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Hey, Sandra Klase, y'all seen me before? I only come up here screaming at y'all.
Yes, ma'am. What is, what is your name again?
Sandra Klase, K-L-A-E-S. Um, I live in Greater Biloxi. I see these homeless people. Played around with homeless people back when I was a teenager. Know a lot of their attitudes. Um, when I moved here, I wasn't scared to walk to Walmart. Now, I'm seeing different homeless people. Don't know where these freaks came from, but they freak me out. I mean, seriously, they're... Oh, I look at them and I'm going, "Okay, how interesting. Where are these freaks coming from? Why are they here and where's all the dope"? And then I find out, yeah, recently, that I have a Suboxin clinic, or whatever you wanna call it, a druggie clinic up the road, makes a lot of money. And it seems like to me, between the druggie clinic and the Catholics and that other church and all these other people enabling these junkies and weirdos to be there, that's why they're there. Really, I mean, enabling, I know, I'm sure y'all have heard of that. AAA talks about it all the time out there, you know, and in your drug rehab about how you're enabling the junkie. Well, what are we doing? Why are we putting all these services in this little bitty area that happens to be where I live when all these freaks are coming? Well, I can't get out of my yard. You know, my dog has been stolen. My house has been broken, you know, tried to been break into three times. Um, the city of Biloxi has given me a cliff of a sidewalk, so I can't even park in my driveway. I'm parking in my yard behind my gate. I wake up at four o'clock in the morning to let my dogs out and see freaks in my yard behind my gate. I lock my gates. You know, I thought about shooting the son of a bitch, but here, uh-uh. I don't wanna go to jail for some junkie.
Ma'am, 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 please watch.
I mean, seriously, y'all, okay, got it, sorry.
Please watch your language.
Y'all, y'all need to do something about these freaks coming around here. Now, I understand people are shipping them here. I've heard mobile screaming about Biloxi shipping them there. Um, they're not really. They're just asking them, "Do you wanna go here or we're gonna do something to you"? Okay, so that's where we're getting all these freaks from. So why don't we just freak them on out? Why don't we put a big ol' sign up at the bus station where they're coming in, telling them, "They are not welcome"? Okay? "You're not welcome here". Why don't we get rid of the enablers and like scatter them through the city so that the homeless have to go from one side of the city to the other and stay busy? Because you know they want that. They gotta eat, they gotta get their dope. Why don't we scatter them to where they're, you know, instead of putting them all in a little area? I mean, it's not fair that we're doing this. Back Bay Mission, what? Mm, I don't see them going there. I mean, I see people walking down my street, sleeping in the yard, that I'm scared to talk to because they're freaking out. Um, you know, I, I get out and...
Can we give her three more minutes? No.
You know, you can't open up your gate.
Thank you, Ms. Klase.
A weirdo's door.
Your time is up. Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Is there anybody else on my left, your right?
Y'all have to do something.
Anybody else on my left, your right? Yes, sir, there's a gentleman coming up now. Yes, sir.
Hi, how are y'all doing? My name is Rodney Lampkin. I live on Greater Avenue. I'm also from the east side, but I transitioned after Katrina.
Please repeat your name again.
I'm Rodney Lampkin.
Thank you.
All right, um, I do understand that there is a homeless problem and dealing with, I do work at Waffle House, so dealing with some homeless people. There are some homeless people who are actually out there who just don't have the extra funds that you need to be able to get a place. Most of the homeless people that I have spoken to do have checks. They do get checks every month, but with the cost of living and everything, they just don't have enough to put a deposit down on this and to be able to move into a place at the same time without any other kinda help. Um, I haven't really got too deep into the situation about all the property that is around our area on Greater Avenue and such, but, um, there is one concern I would like to talk about, if, if it's even up there for debate, but, um, with all that property, you think that maybe the city could probably take over that and maybe extend the cemetery a little bit more? Because, I mean, right now for local people in Biloxi, there's really hardly no place for them to bury their loved ones who are from Biloxi without going past Canal Road to get cemetery plots. And, I mean, the cemetery is technically right there by it. I mean, maybe they consider buying it and adding on to the actual cemetery, and that would probably help alleviate some of the people in the front. And we do need to work on some of the people in the back over the railroad track as well, but, I got just some, some concerns of mine at the moment. I've just spotted it on that topic.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else on my left, your right? Anybody on my left? Ms. Lally?
Sign in.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Wendy Lally. I live at three two four Fairview Drive. And I'm here tonight because I do have a deep love and genuine concern for our city. But sadly, I have a much greater fear and frustration of the path our city's taking. I moved to Biloxi in two thousand. My husband and I have planted very deep roots here. We both work in Biloxi. I work for Biloxi Schools. My kids attend Biloxi Schools. I'm the Secretary of the Edgewater Estates P.O.A. I serve on the tree committee. And I also helped form the West Biloxi Development Alliance. As you can see, I am all in for Biloxi. That being said, I do have a great fear and frustration with the direction our city takes. My fear is that Biloxi is slowly becoming a very undesirable place to live. And even saying that truly does break my heart. But given the things I see happening, it's headed that way. We have vacant properties being overrun with trash and homeless people. And although it seems from today that the Bouvoir Golf Course and, I'm sorry, the Broadwater Golf Course and the Bouvoir School are finally being cleaned up, these properties never should've been allowed to get this bad. We have homeless people walking along Pass Road. We have abandoned shopping carts all over the place. We have vacant buildings with graffiti on them. We have homeless people camping out in front of buildings. I can't speak for all of Biloxi, but in West Biloxi, this is the norm. In fact, tonight on my drive in, there were three homeless people, literally five houses away from my house on Pass Road in the old Hobby Lobby shopping plaza. We're allowing our city to deteriorate right before our eyes. And if we don't change the direction of the city and clean it up, we're gonna end up a very dreadful place to live. And I won't allow this to happen. I am here to charge you as City Council, the mayor in his absence. We need to do something. We must empower our co-enforcement officers to be able to write up properties for violations and not protect wealthy landowners. We must empower our police force and give them the support they need to enforce the law. Again, I need to say, the Broadwater Property and Bouvoir School never should've been allowed to get that bad. If that happened at my property, I guarantee you I would've been written up. There's no reason for us to protect wealthy landowners. We need to let everyone know in our city that the law is the law. And if it's not followed, it must be followed, it must be enforced, and if not, there are consequences. We have laws within our city for a reason, to provide a safe city for all residents to enjoy. And we must do better for our children and our next generation of Biloxians. And we must take action immediately to fix these problems and turn our city around. I believe we can turn it around. I believe we can all work together with the city, with the resources we have, to clean up our city and restore the beauty, charm, and safety that we all deserve. Um, please open your eyes to these issues I've mentioned. Walk, come to, come to West Biloxi. Come, come on Pass Road. You will be surprised what you see. Please don't ignore these problems.
Thank you, Ms. Lally, for your comments.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, anybody else on my left, your right? Yes, sir.
How are y'all doing? My name is Randy Lashbrook.
My name is Randy Lashbrook, and I am from Biloxi. First of all, I'd like to say I thank each and every one of y'all for what you are doing because we do have a problem here. And all of us are here concerned. We are looking to y'all to help us take care of this problem. We know y'all didn't create it by any means. When I was a young man, I was very proud to tell somebody I was from Biloxi, Mississippi. I don't know about you, gentlemen. I'm not too proud of what's going on right now. I'm concerned for the young people in our area. I'm concerned for the old people in our area. And I hope each and every one of us can stick together and come to some sort of conclusion as to the benefit for the city of Biloxi and its citizens. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else on my left, your right? Mr. Fusco.
There's a lot of sign-ins missing, just so you know. Good evening, Biloxi. I'm Jared Fusco from 435 Cove Drive. As we head into the 2024 elections, there have been many in this country that have used the phrase, "We must protect our democracy," which is something I find deeply concerning. I'm not concerned because I have a fear of failure of democracy, because many have failed, and rightfully so, actually, throughout history. The reason many have failed is because inevitably those with minority viewpoints have had their rights trampled upon by those sharing a majority opinion. Benjamin Franklin once said that democracy is two wolves and a lamb voting over what to have for dinner. This, of course, is tyranny by or through mob rule. So, what solution did our founding fathers have? They instituted a republic wherein the people retain the power and law governs the administration of our government by the people and for the people. I sit today in front of elected representatives for the people of Biloxi. Currently, six councilmen today, normally seven with the mayor. All of you have been charged and willing accepted responsibility for upholding the laws of our country, our state, and the city of Biloxi when you took your oath of office. This is a solemn vow and should never be taken lightly. However, I strongly feel as though many of you have forgotten this oath. This city council has had many agenda items that it has voted on. Many of you have done this for numerous years already, some longer than others. As I watch recordings of city council meetings, I have heard members of this council state time and time again that there is no opposition as a reason regarding agenda items on why they voted in support of something. Very rarely does this council state the law supports this as the first and foremost item that must be true. For this reason, I must remind you of what we are, a republic, what you swore to, upholding the law. When you make decisions as councilmen, we, the people of Biloxi, ask you to uphold the law first, determine what the people want second. And if there is any room left, which is probably rare for your personal feelings, add that in last. Anything other than this is not only a disservice to the people of Biloxi, but it will inevitably lead to either mob rule or a shadow oligarchy. Neither of which is acceptable. I have seen time and time again both elected and appointed officials for this city doing everything they can to work around the law, either by intentional misinterpretation or simply choosing not to follow it. Also, I've seen members of this council succumb to public or city administration pressure, even when the law would be violated. In either case, this is unacceptable. Members of the city council ask you to hold the mayor and city officials accountable to the law. But first, start by holding yourselves accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fusco. Is there anybody else on my left, your right, that wishes to address the council? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Bob. Hello, my name is Caitlin. I'm a little nervous. Um, I bought a house on Iris Street in the Greater Biloxi subdivision. And I moved here in 2022. We're from Nebraska. We don't have this kind of population of homeless. I don't feel safe. We can't keep anything out in our yard because we're afraid people are going to steal our stuff. I can't walk my dogs in the morning or at night because people are just roaming our streets. There's a guy with a machete recently. He's gotten, um, arrested multiple times. It's just a very unsafe neighborhood, and we would really like to get it cleaned up. I appreciate all the work that you guys have done. And keep moving forward. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else on my left, your right? Want to address the council? Anybody on this side of the room? Anybody on my right, your left? Yes, ma'am.
I live on Porter Avenue, right around the corner from Back Bay. I help a lot of homeless. My name is Angela Ward. I am seeing some elderly that are not getting help. Back Bay, Mercy Cross, the housing authority has promised people homes. But when they call, they get a home show to them. They give it to somebody else. Oh, we don't have no money. I see bad things, but I also see bad things from the city and these people who got money. They're not using it... Yeah, they got... They're feeding the homeless, but they've been feeding the homeless for years. But they're not actually giving them the actual resources like y'all claim. They're sending people out of the state. I just put somebody on the bus the other day to go to South Carolina. That came from Mercy Cross. Instead of, you know, ignoring the people, especially our elderly that are out there, I understand the people that are sex offenders and stuff like that. They shouldn't even be in the city. They should be further out in the counties. They shouldn't be around our schools. But they're the ones that are running in these neighborhoods like they're talking about and getting away with all their crimes while the ones that are really needing help are not getting it. I asked the city to please step up because I know a family personally. They're 80 years old. Lady's about to die. The husband is on dialysis. They've been asking for a home for over four years. The city of Biloxi has looked over them and left them in the street. I cannot bring a whole family into my home where I would have already done that. I help them as much as I can. But I know the casino gave out a bunch of money to Mercy Cross. I was up there, spoke to the lady yesterday. No, we don't have no money. Or today, excuse me. We don't have no money. Well, what do they do with it? I... Food comes. Y'all get an allowance to help feed the homeless. What are y'all doing with the money that was given? These people are not being put in homes. I helped a whole family that got promised they were given a house that had two disabled children. I housed them for six months because they had disabled children. And while the city displayed and said, "Oh, yeah, we're going to help you. We're going to help you." And they never did. Finally, one of the children got their disability, and it gave them enough to get their own place on their own. But the city is not doing everything they should. And saying that you are and knowing that you aren't, because I can see it with my own eyes, I'm out there helping these people. I'm out there picking these people up and taking them to the bus station. I'm in New Orleans bringing people back. We need resources to get these people off of drugs. We don't have that. We have drug clinics. We don't have a place for these people to go get sober and actually work a program to get a home because there's some people out there that are straight sober and would work your program if you had one to work to actually get into a place. Have a great day.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else on my right, your left, that wishes to address the council? Anybody on the back row? Yes, sir.
My name is William Shoemaker. I live in the Greater Biloxi neighborhood on Iris Street. First of all, I want to say it's a big overtaking you guys have here and appreciate everything that you're doing to work forward on that. Not going to undermine how big of a project that is. As far as how it gets there, is another story. Taxes are a big thing. Revenue is a big thing. Everything functions off that in a council. And as a tourist city, you think that's something that we would have tried to nip in the bud a lot sooner than where it's gotten. But also, as a concerned resident, I work a lot of hours. And I have a wife that lives at home or works at home. And it's not very comforting to work 50, 60 hours a week and being legitimately concerned about her wanting to come outside of our house during the day to catch a break or to walk our dogs. I know there's a lot of red tape, a lot of steps to be taken. And I'm not saying... I haven't done enough research to really have my due diligence, to really get in the gray area. My biggest concern would be moving forward now that we are taking proper steps of what the future plan is. You can see this. This isn't unique to Biloxi. It's not unique to Mississippi. This is going on everywhere. When you see states like California, where their budget and tax revenue grows every year for their homeless apartments, but the homeless grow every year, you're not really gaining any way besides reaching in homeowners' pockets for a higher tax increase. So, I would just hope that while we are making these proper steps in the future, that we are also looking into the future as what that long-term goal is, such as programs, such as, like the lady said, I mean, it... It's no unique scenario. It's not by chance that they've congregated in that neighborhood. When you look at, you have Treasure Bay, a methadone clinic, and a church giving them everything they need within a mile. There's plenty of tree lines. There's plenty of warm weather down here. There has to be another route other than just pushing them somewhere because they're going to continue to come back here. And it's just, we don't want to overburden the police. The more you push them away, the more they're going to come back to this area because that's where all their resources is. So, I would just, I truly thank you guys for everything you have done. We've seen a lot of progress. And I just really, really hope that there is a look into the future as far as what we're going to do with that issue. Because like I said, it's obviously not unique that why they picked that tree line. There's too many tree lines everywhere and too much nice weather. There's got to be a reason to get these people, not at a clinic, but at a rehab center or having the option of growing and progressing and not reverting straight back to where we've been or just going to the next tree line and making a three-mile walk instead of a half a mile walk. But thank you for everything you've done. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Last call. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Carrie Miles, and I live on Iris. And I have been there for 22 years. I have seen the neighborhood have its ups and downs from before Katrina, what Katrina did. Homeless up and down in that area, too. And I can honestly say just recently, especially within the last year, how bad it has gotten. My biggest concern, other than safety, is I'll take my dogs out in the morning to the bathroom, and I can smell smoke. You can smell fires. You know it's coming from in that area. If they're burning fires, that's a safety hazard. And just things like that. What else is going on back there that, you know, we're not aware of? And now that the cleanup's begun, which I'm very thankful because it's really needed, we do see a lot more of them on our streets. And the funny thing is, over the years, we always saw homeless walking up and down the street, not to the extent that they are now. But you saw the same ones over and over. You knew they were local. You knew they'd been here for a while. And there was never any issue. Like, I never felt unsafe from them. But the ones we're seeing now, it's like new faces. I don't know where they're coming from or where they have come from. But it's not the same... It's a different level. It's just, it's different. That's all I can say. So, yeah, I have never felt for my safety in that neighborhood until the last couple of years. And I'm here with them, too.
Thank you, ma'am. Last call. Last call. Any more comments? Okie doke. Citizens' comments is closed. We'll move on to the policy agenda. If the clerk would read item A, please.
Resolution authorizing purchase of buildings located at 386 Beach Boulevard from the Oro Keith Museum of Art and authorize an entry-and-lease agreement and the 2024 management agreement with the Oro Keith Museum.
Subvo. Uh, there's a motion by Mr. Guines. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Glavine. Mr. Guines.
Okay, Peter, you got any?
Yeah, um, you know, when this was originally leased to the ORE, they've always owned the buildings and we own the land.
Right.
And last year, I think there was an option period that we could take over ownership of the buildings. George would always bring up, "The Seafood Museum, we own the building, and it's better for us to own the building. If there's a request to make improvements, we own and control the building." So what we did was to take the Seafood Museum model and try to mirror it so they would be basically equal. There's a few variations here and there on different things, but this would put the ownership, not just to the land, but also to the buildings in the name of the city.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Glavine, any comments?
Nothing added.
Ms. Quave? If you don't mind, just a brief synopsis. I'd spoken with Ms. Quave earlier today and told her to be prepared.
One of the big concerns that I've had in looking at the city's liabilities and assets is it's on 90, and we don't own those buildings. Sooner or later, we'll have a hurricane and we'll have damage, and we're likely to have issues with FEMA reimbursements because that's not owned. So we've tried to come up with a way that benefits us both. This is a longer-term lease so that the ORE can get donors, ensuring that they will be there, but we will actually own the property. And it still keeps the majority of the maintenance items on the ORE. It's very little change on an operational level. It's on the macro. It's the ownership. It's the stuff that we don't look at. You know, for many years, we kind of all thought that we owned them, and we don't.
Okay. And actually, in this item, there are two things. There's the lease agreement, and then there's also the management agreement. And the lease agreement, if approved, will run for 25 years. Is that right, Peter?
Yes.
And the management agreement will run for a year, and then it will renew automatically for four additional one-year terms on the anniversary date. So there are actually two things here on this agenda.
Subject to procreation annually.
Okay. I have a question or two, but there, some of the other council members may have questions. Do any of you have questions? I'll go ahead, then. Frank Gehry's the architect. I don't know if you can answer these. I think we're done.
Yes.
Rachel, thank you. Frank Gehry's the architect. Peter, do you know if we have to get his, or do you know if the museum has to get permission from him to do anything? Or if we own the buildings, would we have to get permission from him or his firm to do anything?
No, the, I mean, the ORE, we actually started this discussion a year ago as possibly doing this, and due to interest of time, we all agreed to defer this a year, just extend the current contract one more year. But no, Mr. Gehry's, uh, the ORE is in agreement with these terms. We've worked them out over several meetings.
Okay. And I noticed under the management agreement, it says, among other things, "Any renewal of this agreement is subject to allocation of funding by the city's governing authority." So if funding is ever an issue, well, that's a consideration here one way or another, correct?
That's right.
All right, thank you. The other question I have is, the employees at the, the ORE employs five people, as I understand it, and they're included on the city's health insurance plan. Is that accurate? I think it's under Article IV, under the management agreement.
If they've been owned in the past, that would remain in effect. I'm not, I'm not totally, I'm not aware whether they are or aren't, but...
Right, but, well, I mean, that's what it says in here, basically. I think the employees of the Seafood Museum, the employees at the ORE Museum, and the folks at the credit, the city's, the credit union that the city does business with. And as I understand, there are five employees at George ORE, four at the Seafood Museum, and five at Southern Coastal, Southern Coastal Credit Union. So they, even though they're not city employees, they can participate in the city's insurance program, correct?
But they paid their way.
Right, they paid their way, but...
Same as our employees.
Right, who paid their way, but when there are claims...
Correct.
Then it, then that, that could impact the insurance company and the city employees. We are the insurance company. I just wanted to clarify that. Okay? Any other? I'm done with the questions I have. Any other questions or comments? All right, we'll call for the question. All in favor of approving the purchase of the buildings and the lease agreement and the management agreement? All opposed, there are none, so it's approved on a 6-0 vote. Thank you. That brings us to the next item.
Consent agenda.
Which is, if the clerk would read item B, please.
Oh, we got an addition.
I missed that. We got R and D.
It's just consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's no B.
There's no reading.
It's a consent agenda. So move.
So Mr. Glavine's making a motion to go on to the consent agenda, okay?
And I'll second.
There's a motion by Mr. Glavine. A second by Mr. Guines. All right, and we'll start with Mr. Shoemaker. Any items?
Just 5B regarding the capital project number 1121. I didn't see anywhere in there it listed which parks or any type of equipment.
Right, I believe, I believe this is just to fund the project, and as we get specific projects within the parks, we could come back and allow those. I think this is just to set up the project.
So basically, that money's just there for any repairs or any new equipment that any of the parks pretty much need?
I think there are three parks that have been primarily discussed, but I think...
Right there, I'm sorry, you didn't have a mic, but there's no money included in this resolution to create the capital project. Go ahead, Peter.
I don't think we've ever had a, you know, we have a general, we have general capital projects in other aspects of the city. I don't think we've ever really had one for parks improvement. So if a project's coming up, this will allow us to put money into this and then, and then go towards, because we have certain bond funds where it can be used on parks. And it, it's just sort of a tracking mechanism to start the process for funding some of these parks.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Glavine, anything?
Just on item H, this is capital project 9999. What capital project is that? And if I read the resolution correctly, this is some, about a half a million from the proceeds of this particular bond that's being designated for capital project 9999.
Yeah, capital project 999 is when, is...
Four nuns.
Four nuns. I believe, is that the use tax? Internet use tax money?
Capital project 999 funding is where we land money that is restricted for capital projects, such as bond money, use tax money, before it's assigned and allocated to individual projects. It keeps us from having restricted funding that we don't know about to go ahead and see it. It produces on the sheet. You have a funding project, this is what we have.
So, Ms. Quave, as I read the resolution, though, it seems to indicate that there's a half a million dollars that's going to be positioned for this 9999 account.
Correct. That is the balance on the 24 bond...
Yep.
Of everything that is not allocated to other projects that have been approved. We're recognizing that into the budget so that when you look at the budget, you will see that there is roughly, I think it's 520,000 of the 24 bond that has not been allocated to a specific project, but it shows in the project budget, so you know it's there.
So from this 9999 budget or capital project, if we have a project, we pull it from this account?
Correct, correct.
And that requires an additional resolution to be able to trigger that.
Or a transfer line item sometimes.
Yep. All right. Thank you.
As long as it fits within the bond requirements or the use tax requirements.
Would it?
Right.
Got you. Thank you.
That's it, Mr. Glavine?
That's it.
Okay. Mr. McGilvery, anything?
Just a couple on E. Reference the seven vehicles.
Right.
The Dodge 1500 Classic, $43,000 for park and rec. Then the, the other Dodge Classic for $36,390. Are those the same vehicles? I know they're going to different departments, but...
Get my car expert up here.
Ms. Quave, if you'd get to them, you might as well have, you might as well have a seat. You seem to be the person of the hour. Okay.
They're not the same vehicle. There's different VINS on that. If you look, we've just purchased, sometimes we'll buy three trucks, you know, we'd need them for public works, for parks and recs. This is the most useful model.
I'd answer that one. And on M? The agreement with Southern Outdoors?
Yeah.
Is that a sublease from the original? In other words, the bait shop was leased, and the way I read it, they want to lease the bottom part of the building?
This is the structure. This is the top part. We, we actually did this last year, and they had some problems with their grant funding. So they thought it best, this is a three-month-at-a-time lease. The lease lapsed, now they're ready to assume that again. It's for the upstairs, not for downstairs. The downstairs is an outdoor area, that's the bait shop and fuel dock.
Okay.
Yeah, before, it was just being used for storage by the bait shop, but now we've, we've got two separate leases. The bait shop franchise, and then the extra storage room we have upstairs, they're two separate leases. I think to the same, well, if it's the same person, but there's some co-ownership there.
Same, same, same topic. We didn't bid this out, or this was negotiated, I assume? It says it's about, what, 1,800 square feet up there, I think?
Yeah, we had, well, from before, when we did it last year, I think we, we either declared it surplus or bid it out. I'm not totally sure what we did a year before, but we gave him the same lease terms as he had before.
Okay, so, so when you say the same lease terms as he had before, who is, who is he? Is that the bait shop downstairs, or is this the same gentleman, just with a different company, or?
It's two different companies.
Okay.
And there are multiple people in each company. There is a co-owner between the two, which is allowing it to work.
All right.
Functionally. Because you have issues that upstairs is all of the fuel equipment. So it would be very hard to not have a tenant that had a co-ownership interest because your fuel dock has got to access the inside of the bait shop upstairs.
Right, okay.
So it's, we're limited in what we can do with this, and this meets that.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Anything else, Mr. McGilvery?
That's all I had. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Newman, anything?
None, also.
Um, let me look on, yeah, on item B, this is unusual. This is the creation of the capital project. We really hadn't said which parks or what equipment or what the improvements are. Usually when we come forth with creating a capital project, we have really some idea of, a general understanding of where we're going, but this is, really doesn't say anything except it looks like we're just trying to get something going.
Right now, we have a capital project 1025, which is citywide street repair. I'm sure y'all are all very familiar with that. We've paved streets in every ward using that project. This is a very similar project for the parks. It will give us a way to fund parks using these restricted bond funds and whatever other funding we need inside the capital project budget and account for it on an as-needed basis. And there is, as I said before, no funding allocated under this resolution. We're just setting it up. It'll be very much like our paving project.
Okay. Thank you. Item, item C deals with lost revenue for two separate years, each identical sums. And some of this is being used for infrastructure, and some is being designated as lost revenue. And, and there's some leftover, let's say, necessary advisable. The city designate the funds under ARPA as follows, $6,537,214 is lost revenue, and basically, the other half would be 4.5 million for public works. So there's 770, excuse me, 766,000 that's going to be accounted for, allocated in this budget. So I understand that ARPA funds can be used for premium pay to essential workers, but this, this isn't premium pay. It's a reimbursement for lost revenue about what we're saying here is what a little, little more than half is being used for salaries that we lost following COVID or that time or in its aftermath. Is that accurate, Peter?
Yeah, the prior resolution reference, 49823, basically allocated these two numbers, and we've gotten some final numbers on these capital projects. Not a lot, but Treasury requires us, even though we say it was lost revenue, they want to know, well, what did you do with it after you reported it as lost revenue? So for us to be able to finish our reporting to Treasury, we're going to say we've paid it in salaries, past salaries.
Exactly.
So they just want to show that the money is gone, and this will allow us to, to stop any reporting on that revenue component. We still will report to them as we fund out those capital projects that we have a match with, with the state, a 50-50 match.
Okay. All right, and then on item E, which Mr. McGilvery had mentioned, there were two Dodge 1500 trucks, one going to one department, one going to the other, but there was a difference in cost. And my guess, I'm guessing that they're two different models. They may be, I think, they may not even be the same year, maybe 24 or 23 truck, but again, I'm guessing that you're trying to get any vehicles you can at the moment. Would, would that be accurate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Let's see what item. On item G, we're appropriating 1.8 million for the Fire Station 5 improvements, but during discussions with the, on departmental budgets, there was mention made possibly, or at least looking at, a different site for Fire Station 5, maybe construction of a new, a new fire station. And I checked back to see what Fire Station 7 cost us, which is the big one on Pops Ferry Road, and that was about 3.5 million, I guess. That was a couple of years ago. And the cost of Fire Station 10 was like 2.3 million. So it would be, if we stay where we are here and renovate that, this, I just want to be sure the administration's given some thought to this. I assume you have. It's what we can afford. You'll, you'll renovate without, I guess, impacting the main structure, or at least impactful as possible, but it's also a small site there, given the water well, and there's just no room to expand or bigger, build a bigger station. I don't, I guess we can house the fire trucks in there. I don't know how big the bays are, but...
That's all under consideration. This is really just to start the project, get it off the ground. If we find a good site nearby that, that doesn't cause us harm in the leg, we're going to do a cost analysis of that.
Okay, so this starts the process, but don't get excited yet because there's still further planning. Okay? Thank you.
Right.
And then, let's see, that's all I had. Okay. Call for the question. All in favor of the consent agendas presented? 6-0 vote. Any exceptions? Mr. Guines?
None.
Ms. Newman? Mr. McGilvery? Mr. Glavine?
I have none.
Mr. Shoemaker?
No exceptions.
All right, and I have none. Thank you. We'll move next to the code enforcement hearings. Thank you, Ms. Quave, for spending some time with us. Okie doke. Mr. Krill, it's all yours. The first one, please.
Item A, Julius Broussard, Zero Southern Avenue. This property's still in violation.
Is Mr. Broussard here, or anyone here to speak on behalf of this property, or to speak on the topic of this property? Slide on Southern Avenue. There being no one, that hearing is closed. We'll go to the next one. Mr. Krill?
Item B, Yonelton de Jesus Castillo Escobar, 7215 West Larkin Place. That case has been resolved. Item C, Cynthia Davis Estate, 288 Fayard Street. We would ask for 30 days on that property.
Is it, is a motion by Mr. Guines? Is there a second? Second by Mr. McGilvery. All in favor? It's approved on a 6-0 vote.
Item D, LZ Properties LLC, Zero Pops Ferry Road. That case has been resolved. Item E, Arthur and Shasta Forehand, 173 Pine Grove Avenue. That case has been resolved. Item F, Johnny J Hakim, 408 Oaklawn Place. This property's still in violation.
Excuse me. Ma'am, yes, ma'am, come forward. I'm sorry.
I have a picture.
Yes, ma'am, if you would, yes, ma'am, if you would tell, if you would tell us your name and which property you're referring to.
I'm Sonia Murray. I live at 407 Oaklawn Place. I've had a house which is in good condition therefore since 1970. If you gentlemen would be kind enough to look...
Okay.
And can you just ask yourself if you would be willing to have this house, this mess, across the street from your house? This is what I look at every day. The house was flooded in Katrina. It was rotten and termite infested at that time because it was on the ground instead of being raised at all. When Mr. Colson died, it should have been pulled down because of its deplorable rotten condition, but unfortunately, he left it to somebody who decided to rehab it, and this is the result. It is still rotten and, as I said, it's got leaks, it's got problems, and the grass is two feet high and has been two feet high for the last several years. On occasion, one of the neighbors will be, oh, for goodness of his heart, will cut it, but this has been an ongoing situation for a very long time, and I would really appreciate it if you could get something done about it because it's bad for property values in the neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am, and I'm sorry. Would you, would you say your name again, please?
Sonia Murray. Mrs. Gilbert Murray.
Thank you.
Anything?
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Murray.
Thank you.
And we're moving forward on this process to do exactly what you request. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. Mr. Krill, item G.
Okay. Hollywood LLC, 1628... Okay. Hollywood LLC, 1628 Hollywood Boulevard. That case has been resolved. Joan E. Lund, 161 Connery Circle. That case has been resolved. Item I, Joan E. Lund, 444 Oaklawn Place. That case has been resolved. Item J, Jacob R. and Laura O'Keefe, 2432 West Shore Drive. That case has been resolved. Item K, Excellent Holdings Corporation, 395 Fayard Street. That case has been resolved. Item L, James M. Urteile, 13105 Riverland Drive. This property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of 13105 Riverland Drive, or is Mr. Urteile or his representative here to speak on this matter? All right, there's no one present. That hearing is closed. The next item, please, Mr. Creel.
Item M, Annie S. Mebauer and Lena Palmer, 0 Keller Avenue. This property's still in violation.
Is there anybody here to speak on the lot on Keller Avenue, the owners of which are Annie Mebauer or Mebauer and Lena Palmer? There being none, this matter is closed. That brings us to the next case.
Item N, Lena S. Palmer et al., 0 Reading Street. This property's still in violation.
Is Ms. Lena Palmer or her representative here to speak on this lot on Reading Street? There being no one, this hearing is closed. That brings us to the next item.
Item O, Odie S. Swetman et al., 0 Keller Avenue. This property's still in violation.
Is Mr. Odie Swetman or his representative here to speak on this lot on Keller Avenue? There being no one, this hearing is closed.
Item P, ET Properties LLC, 1891 Pops Ferry Road Lots 138 and 156. Both of those have been resolved.
All right. I will. General observation is, over the years, we seem to be getting more resolved.
We are. Yes, sir.
These issues. Thank you, Mr. Creel. That brings us to the routine agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Some more.
By Mr. Guines.
Second.
By Mr. Glavine. The Gs are in the house.
Okay, my turn. All right.
All right, Mr. Guines, go ahead. Speak for those not present.
All right, as George would say, Walt, give us an update.
Thank you, counsel. Good evening. So last time, we spoke about the 230.2000 that MEMA has in the Mississippi PA, which is their website for updating the city. It's still in step four or five. It's been there 11 days as of today. It should hit any minute. So we've got our next council meeting, as you know, on the 10th because we've got back-to-back council meetings. We don't have a skip week in this month. So hopefully, good news on September 10th for everybody.
Thank you, all.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Walt. Anything else on the routine agenda? I just I just have one question, and I don't I don't know if there's anybody present who can answer it, but I'll give it a go for the few stalwart souls who are still present. On the docket, it's vendor 13654 Geiger Brothers, and it would appear to be some sort of advertising. I don't I don't. I don't know if that.
What page is that?
I don't know what page it's on, but the vendor number is 13654. I don't know if you'll have it there.
Page is down. You got a page?
No, I don't.
Okay.
But they're but they're listed numerically, I think.
Geiger Brothers? That's is that a AC? Aren't they AC guys?
They may be. There were seven entries on the docket, totaled $7,400. I just thought it might be advertising of some sort. Any? Okay, it's not the end of the world. We can we'll approve. I was just I was just curious. It's the air people. Okay, thank you. That concludes my question. All in favor of the routine agenda? Thank you. 6-0 vote. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? What? No, thank you, Mr. Oh, the run. Mr. Glavine, you missed your opportunity. But McGilvery's got a G in it. All right, all in favor. It's approved on a 6-0 vote. Thank you. Time 7:16 for the clerk. Thank you. Thank you all for attending and sitting through a few are here the whole time, a long series of meetings. Thank you. Good night. Rachel? Thank you. Good job. Rachel, clean up on aisle four. Clean up on aisle four.